Good evening. My name is Catherine All, and on behalf of the League of Women Voters of Kitsap, I want to welcome all of you to the Paulsboro City Council Position 6 Virtual Candidate Forum. The League of Women Voters is a nonpartisan organization that doesn't support or oppose political parties or candidates. After careful study and consensus by our members, the League does take positions on issues, and we take action on those positions at the local, state, and national level. The League is also a membership organization and depends on our members to organize and run events such as this. We invite and encourage both women and men to become members and help us work on our basic belief that our form of government depends upon the informed and active participation of its citizens. Okay, and the candidates participating are David Musgrove, wave your hand, David, and Pam Keely, wave your hand, there you go. The rules of the forum for the viewing public to know, the candidates will be given one and a half minutes to make an opening statement. After both candidates have spoken, the moderator, that's me, will ask questions that have been submitted by the public. All candidates will have one minute to respond to each question. At the end of the forum, each candidate will have one and a half minutes to make a closing statement. And candidates, keep your eye on the digital timer. Both of you deserve our thanks for stepping up and running for office. Please be respectful of each other, you each deserve that. Okay, now let's get started. We will begin with opening statements. David, have at it.
Well, thank you, and good evening to everyone. Good to see a lot of neighbors here. I want to thank again the League of Women Voters for providing this opportunity to the public as a means for us all to get to know each other better, and that's always a good thing. Can't work together unless you can know your partners. I'm David Musgrove. I am currently on Paulsboro City Council Position 6, and the positions on the city council are not by district or borough or anything, so each of us actually represents all of Paulsboro from our seat, not just a section of it. I'm your neighbor. Over the years, in Paulsboro, which have now been over 20 for me, with my wife Leanne, we raised five children here. This is where we chose to raise our children, as an awesome community. Excuse me. It's a wonderful place, and once they moved on with their lives, and we're hopefully successful with that, we look to give back to our community. And so I looked at the city council, and while I am not in politics and I'm not a politician, I was looking for the good of our community and what skills I may be able to use to benefit our community and improve it in any which way I possibly could. So that's over 10 years ago that I got onto council, and I've been on there since then, run a number of races, and I have enjoyed quite a bit of popular support.
Okay, time is up now, David.
Oh, excuse me, thank you.
You'll have more time to talk.
Thank you.
Okay, Pam, your opening statement?
Well, thank you, League of Women Voters, and hi, everyone. Like David said, Paulsboro is a wonderful city with an extraordinary environment and a unique identity, and I love living here, too. But like so many other cities, Paulsboro is facing multiple crises. Three big problems are affecting the health of our community: COVID-19, racism, which Kitsap County has declared a public health emergency, and the climate crisis, smoke, wildfires, extreme heat waves, and so on. In spite of rampant development, Paulsboro's lack of affordable housing also puts people at risk, and our relationship with the Suamish tribe is on life support at best. For almost 50 years, I've been a nurse, disaster responder, volunteer with immigrants, and an advocate for workers, the LGBTQ community, indigenous people, and people of color. When North Kitsap community was threatened by mass spraying of toxic pesticides from helicopters, I co-founded Kitsap Environmental Coalition and stopped that plan. It's time to add fresh energy and the skills and perspective of a health professional to City Hall. I'm ready to listen to our community and negotiate solutions.
Okay, thank you. And now, we've invited people to submit questions to our website, and so we've selected a certain number of them and tried to keep categories together when there have been a bunch of questions on the same topic. So let's start, and we'll go back and forth. And so Pam, you get to start with this one, and you've covered maybe a little bit of it, but what do you believe is the greatest challenge facing Paulsboro?
Well, clearly, right now, the greatest challenge is COVID-19 because that impacts everything. You know, it impacts people's health, their jobs, it impacts our business community, schools. We're looking at a crisis of daycare, for instance. I just talked to a mother today who's a nurse, just starting at St. Michael's, moved to Paulsboro with her husband, and when her child gets sick, or another child at the school, then she has to figure out where she's going to prioritize. Does she go to work that day, or does she stay home? Does she find childcare? And many mothers in the community are saying this is a crisis for them. COVID has divided the community, and I think it's time for us as city leaders to step up, be unified, and show that we can come together.
Thank you. David, your thought on the biggest challenge, greatest challenge facing Paulsboro?
I can't say that there's one greatest challenge. There are many of them, and we deal with these every day, every week, every year. They range widely. Right now, there's a lot of focus on COVID and the many impacts that it is having, as Ms. Keely has already mentioned, those are just a few of them. We're trying to retain jobs, we're trying to help people with healthcare, we're trying to do many things all at the same time, but it extends far beyond that to things like issues, upcoming issues with sewage systems, issues we have with community relations. And yes, divisiveness is definitely something that is becoming a real problem for us here, and we need some serious and effective solutions for it. Paulsboro has always been known as a very kind, caring, and welcoming community, and we need to make sure we put that back on the front burner.
Okay, thank you. And that sort of leads into the next question, and you get to go first on this one, David. It says, "There have been discussions in committees and at council meetings about forming a race equity advisory committee in Paulsboro." And this question said, "Should the committee be just equity so that it covers everyone, including handicapped and LGBTQ? Should there be, and also, should the committee be made up of community members, and do you support such a committee?" David?
Okay, thank you. Let me squeeze in what I can. The council is really serious on this issue, and the last thing they want to do is commit lip service, so to speak. They want effective solutions to real problems. And so, right now, they've been conducting a number of meetings, doing analysis, taking suggestions, as well as problem-solving to this. We're definitely working on this, and we're looking to really do something about it. Equity, absolutely. It could even be shaken down to ethics as a big umbrella, but we need to blanket more of our community and make sure we don't leave any out that have every right and should be in the middle of that, from low-income earners to the elderly, fixed income, handicap, you name it, everybody should be in that, as they all deserve that equity, they all deserve inclusion, and we need to make sure that we have a plan that pulls that all together.
Okay, and I may give you a little more time if we need it on this issue, but Pam, it's your turn for the question.
Thank you, and I want to say that I agree that it's time to apply the lens of racial equity to all city policy, but I think we need to extend that to everyone in the community with special attention to class, to low income, the poor, the working poor, and we also need to apply a lens of environmental sustainability to all of our policy upfront. When it comes to a citizen advisory council, if people know, I'm not sure that they do, the city council and the committee meetings are all videotaped and available to watch. And in the last committee meeting, it was discussed, and we need a committee, it needs to be people of color, it needs to do real change and have power, and the committee has been working on this for two years.
Okay, let's give David another minute, and then Pam another minute, because this is a big issue in Paulsboro, and both, there's two other parts to the question. One, should it be equity rather than just race equity? But then, should the committee be made up of community members, and do you support such a committee? David, you get another minute.
All right, fine, and I'll go ahead and take a few moments upfront to make the public aware that the city of Paulsboro is currently in certain litigation that prevents me from commenting specifically on certain topics. I'll be glad to bring those up when they occur. Moving on with this topic of the race equity diversity, this is the concern, is that there are so many different concepts of how this should be approached, and every one of them needs consideration. There is a lot of concern with how certain approaches could affect certain members of the community more or less than others. That's a legitimate concern, and it needs to be investigated. So it's not a case where anybody is being lazy about this, but it's a very difficult topic to get your hands around without accidentally veering off the tracks or creating damage that you did not intend to. So I fully support the council and the movements that it's been making.
Okay, and Pam, you get an extra minute.
Okay, well, the council has had this topic in front of them for over two years now, about two and a half years, and it's been in committee, it's been discussed, and it's time for the council to move ahead and actually do something. You know, as David mentioned, there's a federal civil rights lawsuit now hanging over the head of the city, and we haven't done anything to even begin to mend our relationship with the Suamish tribe. In fact, that's why we have the lawsuit and the statement from Chairman Forsman that was made in the Kitsap Sun. So I do think we need to focus on our issues with racism in the city. I think that community members definitely need to be on this committee, and it should be comprised primarily of people of color from our community.
Okay. Thank you. And I realize that David, as a sitting council member, cannot comment specifically on a lawsuit that is brought to the city, and so there will be no questions asked specifically about a lawsuit. Let's move to a different topic. And Pam, you get to go first on this one. Are you familiar with the proposed Paulsboro Event and Recreation Center, known as PERC? And what do you support or oppose regarding it?
Thank you, Catherine, for that question. Yes, I'm familiar with the PERC, the structure, I'm familiar with plans for it, the cost of it, I'm familiar with the selection of the former chief of police to be the new director for that facility, and I'm also familiar with Paulsboro's wonderful parks and rec offerings. But you know, as a neighbor pointed out to me, who is a younger woman of color and another mother, she said, "You know, Pam, there's nothing in parks and rec for other cultures. There's no multicultural offerings whatsoever in terms of language, arts, cooking, any way to help us come together as a community in really creative ways."
Thank you, Pam. David?
Yes, thank you, the PERC. So this is the 800-pound gorilla in the room, partially due on the size of this project and the cost of this project. It will be immensely expensive. However, the interest is still very strong as we go through the process of examining whether it's truly viable and how it should offer what it should offer. And so there's a lot of work being done on this, and the goal is to have something that really brings the community together, and we're not talking just Paulsboro, but the greater Paulsboro area, what people often call the zip code. While originally, council had pursued the YMCA to put a facility up there, we believe that maybe this might be an opportunity to greater, for greater customization specifically for our residents to use. I'd like to be more specific on all of this, but I think that covers it right now. We think right now it's worth pursuing this, what we're doing.
Okay. This is a tough one. Access to, let's see, and David, you get to go first on this one. "Access to comprehensive, affordable healthcare is critical for a thriving community. Unfortunately, our city and the entire Kitsap Peninsula is now home to a healthcare monopoly that restricts medical services available to patients. Is there anything you can do as a member of the Paulsboro City Council to address the current crisis of quality healthcare availability?"
Well, my answer to that is not much, but we can do something, and I think we need to do every little bit we can for those things that are necessary. Most of this rains down from federal and state levels, and to a large degree, our hands are tied, but we are a voice, and as that voice, we can apply back pressure back up through the county, through the state, and even the federal levels. So at this point, Kitsap Health is our primary focus, and in order to bring our thoughts together on this and try to bring some resolution to some of the holes that are appearing in the system, which I assume is what the question is relating to. And so while we have the Sound Health and these other facilities, they are not necessarily comprehensive, and that we need a little bit more from our state legislators and our state departments to bring to our local community to round out the system.
Okay, thank you. Pam?
Well, let's take this back to COVID and the impact of just having one hospital in the county on our community. That really puts us at a disadvantage, and if people tuned in a few days ago to the Kitsap County Board of Health meeting with the county health commissioner, Dr. Morrow, and the, actually, two of the fire chiefs, talking about the crisis that has been created, you know, ambulances backed up for hours, people not being able to access care. However, there are people in the community now discussing cities coming together in a coalition to look at creating a health district and contracting for health. So that could be a real, you know, literally life-saving option that I would really encourage the city of Paulsboro to get behind.
Okay, thank you. And Pam, you get to go first on this question. "Recently, there were signs that depicted syringes in the pattern of swastika at various areas in the county. What can the Paulsboro City Council do to support and defend its citizens who may feel targeted and at risk? And do you support vaccine mandates, which these signs appear to oppose?"
Okay, let's take the last part of that. First, Catherine, I absolutely support vaccine mandates. As a healthcare professional and a longtime nurse on the front lines, as someone who has lost people very close to COVID, and someone who believes in science and facts, we know what works. And Dr. Morrow presented a number of options to the health board this week. Unfortunately, there were no health professionals as part of that team, and the options were sort of kicked down the road for another week for later discussion. It's tough. I mean, we see the signs out there. I have one of them in the back of my truck right now that I went out and took down, and it's definitely an issue, but there are ways that the city can work to bring us around.
Okay, David?
Yeah, thank you, Catherine. It's a good question. We often see images that are disturbing, whether they're in our community or on our television, and it's tough to deal with. Those signs were a no-brainer in the first place. You can't place signs on traffic signage posts anyway, so I'm glad that that was an easy call. However, we've had to deal with similar other issues in the past, and it can create issues of unrealized direction, so to speak. For example, on Viking Avenue, for many years, we had an image of what appeared to be Charles Manson, including the swastika on his forehead, and how we, as a community, had to deal with that. It's now gone, and there are other solutions that we can approach. I don't suggest that our community live in fear or have intense disgust. You can have extreme dislike, and I think that you should speak out about this, but we need to be able to handle these things in a better fashion moving forward. Thank you.
Thanks. And when you say, Catherine, that's a great question, I'm glad you asked it. I'm just asking questions that the public put forward, so I'm just sort of the messenger at this one, but there were a lot of good questions. Okay, and David, you get to go first on this. It says, "How will you connect with the community you serve beyond meetings, webinars, and forums?"
Okay, that's an easy one. What I do is what everyone does, probably a little bit more of it. I'm out in the community. I talk with my neighbors, I talk with friends, I talk with coworkers, but I also go down on the streets. I'm in all parts of the community, speaking with people. I kind of promote conversation because I want to know. I like to get perspective and candid perspective, it's awesome. So you catch people and you get how they really feel about things, and so this is where I get a great deal of my feedback. I often report this in council meetings, where I've spoken to a certain number of people and get, you know, a certain type of response. This is one of the most effective ways beyond the usual emails, phone calls, and things like that, which are also, every one of them are read and taken to heart. But I like that personal outreach, and it's served me very well so far, as well as other members of the city council.
Thank you. Pam, your means of communicating?
Well, I'm out in the community also. I participate in different groups and organizations. I like to meet business owners and learn about the people that live here in deeper ways by listening to their stories, what they care about, where they come from, and what's on their mind about the city, what's important to them, and what they want to be heard. Now, since I've been out knocking on doors, one thing that I'm hearing often from people is that they don't feel heard by our council members and the mayor. And, you know, they may be able to leave a message during a council meeting, and now, unfortunately, you know, we're in the Zoom format, but it's a very passive experience. So I hope to really activate relationships in a different way.
Okay, thank you. And I don't think, David, that this has to do with any particular lawsuit, but if so, you can not answer it. The question is, what will you do to improve the relationship between the Paulsboro City Council and the Suamish tribe? What current issues need to be addressed, and how will you do this work? So I'll give Pam a chance to answer, and then we'll go to you for however you feel about it.
Okay, thank you, Catherine. You know, actually, a week or so ago, the Kitsap County and the Dispute Resolution Center, in concert with the Suamish tribe, started a series of programs on the culture, the history, and the issues of the Suamish tribe, called the Port Madison Dialogues, and people can Google that, find that online. But one thing I would hope that the city would do would be to use that and really make a concerted effort, first of all, to share it with local civic leaders, church figures, business people, and then offer it to the community and bring us together in roundtables, COVID-safe, of course, but to start doing our homework that we need to do to restore some trust with the Suamish.
Okay. David?
Yes, so to work around the edges, basically, we've always had a good relationship of sorts with the Suamish tribe and the other tribes in the area as a historical basis. And, excuse me, I had an alarm going off. I apologize. So we've had a fairly good one. We're one of the first cities, if not the first city in Washington State, that had a memorandum of understanding with the local tribe. It was a first. We've always had an outreach going and consideration back and forth. Moving to more recently, we continue to do this in more than just conversation. For example, at our new Knoll Road Roundabout, we have set aside a place for native art and also provided funding and maintenance for such things in order to encourage and enhance the, in order to encourage and enhance that. Thank you.
Okay, you can have a couple of more seconds because you got interrupted with something.
No problem, thank you.
Okay. Okay, and David, you get to go first with this. "Are you aware of Senate Bill 5188 in the state legislature, which was first called the Public Bank, and now is called the Public Financial Cooperative, with membership of local and tribal governments? Do you support or oppose it, and why?"
Actually, that's a good one for me because I am aware of it, but I can't speak with authority to it. I don't like speaking, I don't like BSing my way through something, and I am not comfortable discussing on SB 5188 at this point and its impacts that it will have, not only for the local tribes, but for Paulsboro as well. So I will simply defer that. So I will simply defer that, that question. I'll be glad to answer it later when I've had an opportunity to look at it closer. Thank you.
And, and it was one of those bills that was introduced last session and passed one of the houses, but not the other. And so it will be brought up again this session. So there'll be plenty of time to comment on it. Pam, are you aware of it and do you have an opinion?
Oh, sure, yes. I'm quite familiar with this from Senator Hasagawa in Seattle. This has really been under discussion for several years, actually. And I support it because if we look at the millions of dollars in our budgets and how that money sits in financial institutions and how those financial institutions invest and work with those funds, which are our funds and taxpayer funds, right? They're being used, for instance, to make loans to fossil fuel companies, which is counterproductive to green climate, many tribal agendas and interests in terms of the environment.
Okay, thank you. Okay, we're getting down to the tail end of our questions. And Pam, you go first on this one. Does the city have a community review or oversight board for the police department? If you know whether they do or not.
Well, I know that the city had a citizen advisory committee that worked with the police and the council and the mayor until six years ago. And at that time, the chief of police, who was not the current Chief Harding or the previous police chief, but the one before that, his recommendation to the council and the mayor was that because there was now Facebook and social media, that there was no longer a need for a citizen group with oversight or advisory powers. So the mayor dissolved it. The good news is, we can always bring a committee back, and I think that we need one. Right now, we have an issue with one of our council members who's displaying a Blue Lives Matter flag on his Zoom background during council meetings.
Okay, David?
Yeah, there is, there is community review at, at multiple levels. As far as an authoritative community member panel does not currently exist in the form of, of these multiple methods. So for example, the Public Safety Legal Committee is in review every month, which includes the public. And so anytime there is a question, concern, or whatever can be brought up to the council, to the committees, to the mayor. There are many ways to approach this and bring it to light. Public action and activity is a very necessary part of our social system awareness. And then once awareness is had, then it shifts gears completely into problem-solving, analysis, and finding fair, effective solutions to the issues. And that's where the city government comes in.
Okay. I'm going to throw this question out. It wasn't specifically on our list, but I think both of you have mentioned it a little bit. And, let's see, David, you would go first. What is the city doing or what can the city do, do about more affordable housing?
Okay, straight to the point. And the answer, though, can, can be quite long. I've been a member of the KRCC Affordable Housing Task Force. I am also, I was the first chair of the formed Housing, Health, and, and Human Services Committee, which deals specifically with affordable housing issues. This is very strongly on the council's radar. I've been a strong proponent of it. And we've been working towards that in many ways, including most recently, just last week, we, we authorized some 1406 funds. 1406 is some sales tax, basically call it give-back money from the state for purpose, specific purposes, including affordable housing and support. And so we designated some of that, we're passing along to council for approval in order to support some of the members of our community that can no longer afford the new increases in rent that just occurred. Thank you. I wish I had more time.
Well, I may give you more, I don't know. Pam?
So I think it's time to really get creative about funding for affordable housing. You know, I, I met a woman at the Saturday Market a couple of weekends ago who is on a fixed income. She has a voucher for $1,253 and there's nowhere in Paulsbow for her to rent. And she's living or staying temporarily with a friend, and she needs to find somewhere now. You know, a friend of mine says that budgets are a numerical expression of our values. And if you, again, go back and listen to some of the recent meetings, topics come up like a patio that the mayor wants to have outside the rooftop on City Hall. The feasibility study for that alone is over $15,000, and the project itself could cost over $250,000. So things like this don't make sense.
Okay. This may be one of the topics for this next question, which does happen to be our last one. And this will probably be a hard one, too. What is your top budget priority for Paulsbow? And Pam, you go first on this question.
Well, obviously, that would be affordable housing. I mean, we hear that there's the Nordic Cottage Project, right? But that's only 12 units. And if you take the spectrum of, of residents who are really in a crisis for housing, it's everybody from Seda, the 71-year-old mom who has a HUD voucher, to the young nurse that I met today with her, her husband, who's actually becoming a city employee. And their rent went from $1,200 a month to $2,000 a month when they came to Paulsbow. So we need to look at ways that the city can put money out there for rent as well as to create new housing options.
Okay, David?
Thank you. While it might be easy to say that our current, current housing crisis was from the recession and 10 years of building nothing, and the less of something you have, the more expensive it is. And in effect, that is kind of where we're at. That doesn't bring about a solution today. And so when we're looking at solutions, we need to look pretty wide and broad. Let me roll back to the most important budget item. City government is service, is service to the people. Most of what we do is labor-based, is services to everyone. So my first focus on city budget is keeping our level of service up to our community members, giving them the service for the level of service and the quality of life that they need in order to do all the things that they need. And that rolls on down to things like service in order to enable affordable housing. Okay, it's not all about cash, it's about the work that goes into it.
Okay, thank you. Well, I think you've, you've covered a wide spectrum of issues. And before our closing statements, I just want to say one thing that I deeply believe. I don't think there are more important elections than local elections. And unfortunately, fewer people vote when it's just local. City councils, mayors, school boards, that sort of thing, than they do for, when it's a presidential election. But as both of you know, you can't just go to Congress and sign up to testify or have your voice heard necessarily. You can, in normal times, you can just go in and sign in at Paulsbow City Council to testify, to, to let your voice be heard. You can go to a local school board meeting, you can go to county commissioners' meeting. So spread the word about how important, not just because you're running, but how important these local elections are to our daily lives. It can be about something as simple as potholes that affects our daily lives. Anyway, at this point, it's time for your closing statements. And, okay. And David, you got to give the first opening statement. So we'll let Pam give the first closing and then you'll give the following closing. So Pam?
Okay, well, thank you, Catherine and the League of Women Voters. Thank you, Mr. Musgrove, and thank you, audience, tonight for showing up. I hope our forum has given you an idea of what I can bring to City Hall. I'm guided by facts, I know how to research, I can handle details, make tough decisions. Now, I may be new to the council, but I know the issues and I'm ready to go to work. Not just being a nurse, but my entire life has been devoted to teamwork and the good of many communities. Paulsbow has real issues that need real solutions and they need action. I'm ready to go to work for you. For more information or to get in touch, please see our website at www.paulsbowforall.com. Remember, my name is not on the ballot. I'm a write-in, Pam Keeley, City Council, position number six, and thank you very much.
Okay, David?
Yes, and likewise, thank you to everybody involved in this. It's a fantastic tool for the community to be involved or get involved or find something that they wish they were more involved. You're absolutely right, local starts local. What happens in your backyard begins in your backyard. And while there may be national level effects, what really happens here, it happens at the local level. So I encourage everyone to put some focus on your local elections. I don't have a campaign opponent on the ballot. So I have the issue that a lot of people don't vote for somebody who has nobody running against them. And so quite literally, I need you to go out there and check the box next to the guy that doesn't have an opponent. And if, if that is your desire, if you've learned enough from me tonight, if you haven't, please contact me, write through the city email is fine. And there is so much that we need to pull together from every level, but especially in our local community. We have a fantastic community, we need to maintain that. We have culture here that needs to be maintained. We have friendliness to, you know, just a willingness of everyone here and volunteers and everything to have such a wonderful community. And we need to strive to maintain that with each other. Thank you.
Thank you, David. And I also want to thank the many, many League of Women Voters of Kitsap volunteers that have contributed, boy, I don't know the number. I think we're doing 10 or 15 forums around the county this election season. And it takes a lot of work to do that. And so thank you to the, the League volunteers. We also want to thank Kitsap Regional Library for helping publicize our forums and for BCAT for recording this forum for broadcast on cable channel three or 12. The League is also, has recorded this forum, and it will be on our website in a few days. Our website is l w v dash kitsap dot org. So encourage anybody that asks you about this that weren't able to, to attend, that they can go there and watch it. And one final thing. I have moderated local and state elections for many, many years. And it always makes me so proud of the candidates that we have and how they treat one another. So thank you to, for being here and for, for being so nice to each other. And congratulations for running and good luck to you both.
Thank you.
Thank you. That will be the end of our forum tonight. Good night.